Recording has started.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, July 16th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting for Center County Government. We are going to welcome any public comments. Call the meeting to order, first and foremost, and welcome any public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will look for a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, July 9th meeting.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from the July 9th Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Moving into our COVID-19 planning and response for our personnel, we have two offices, our Tax Assessment Office and also our Correctional Facility. We'll turn it over to Margaret for these items. Good morning.
Morning. So, in front of you are two considerations, two departments considerations for reinstatement of employees based on increased work returning to the Tax Assessment Office and to the Correctional Facility. So, the tax assessment request is to reinstate three individuals, Chelsea Faust, Kaylee Ely, and Jeffrey Katherman. And, again, this is because of increased need for those folks to be out in the field doing assessments. We are seeing, Mark has expressed quite an uptick in that activity. The second item is for the Correctional Facility, considering approval of the reinstatement of Norris Webb as a counselor. He was on reduced hours. This request is to return him to full-time status effective July 19th. That is also based on more individuals coming into the Correctional Facility. We hit a low several weeks ago in terms of census in the facility. That is ticking up at this point, and so he is asking for the return of that counselor. I know this morning, we're going to be talking about furloughs and executive session. We can talk more about the composition of some of the remaining individuals and so forth, but these are the requests we've had since our last Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Margaret. Any feedback, comments for Margaret on these four individuals? Okay. Hearing none is her motion.
Motion to approve the personnel request from the department heads in Tax Assessment and at the Correctional Facility.
Was there a second? I cut out there for a second. I'm sorry. I will second the motion. I don't know if Commissioner Dershowitz-
Is Steve still on? I don't see his phone number on the attending list, unless he's cycled to the bottom.
Oh, okay. 359-8605. That must not be him, then. Okay, that was my understanding, Mark. I'm sorry, because I did hear him approve the minutes.
Right, right. But I think he cut out for some reason.
Okay, why don't we, yeah, why don't we not take the, I'll second it, so it's moved and seconded, and we'll see if we can get Steve back, Commissioner Dershowitz back on here.
Would you like-
It hasn't, go ahead, Margaret.
Would you like me to text him?
That'd be super. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, normally when he's on, his number ends in 2450, and I'm just not seeing that one.
Okay, all right.
I have texted him.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you.
Mr. Pipe?
Yes, Administrator Gray.
While we're waiting, I'm not sure, the proper protocol for this, but we need to add an agenda item for updates on our county relief block grant process.
Okay.
Perhaps it could be added after the discussion on personal travel.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we, we'll wait until Commissioner Dershowitz rejoins us, and then we'll, we can add that on there.
Okay, thank you.
That's helpful. So, when we come back, we'll take the action on the reinstatement, and then we'll add that to the agenda. Okay.
I'm back. My internet went down temporarily, apparently.
Not a worry, Commissioner. So, the only thing that we've done is we've motioned and seconded the reinstatement of the three folks from Assessment and one from the Correctional Facility, and so that's where we're at. So, did you have any questions on any of those items?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. We'll call the question, then. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
All aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and then we needed to add an item, which would be discussion of the county relief block grant process.
And so, ugly?
Yeah.
You want to add that as like item C?
That works great.
Okay. Motion to add item C under COVID Planning and Response for a discussion of the COVID grant. What was that, Margaret?
County Relief Block Grant.
The County Relief Block Grant Update.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to add the community relief or county relief block grant process discussion to the agenda as of item C. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, so we'll now go to consider extension of temporary furloughs, partial reduction in hours for non-court-related offices. Do we need to have a discussion at this point, or do we, that would be an action that would come out of the executive session?
Be an executive session discussion.
Okay. And again, we wouldn't take any action in executive session. We would do that afterwards or potentially next week, so just having that on the record. We would then move into the count, our guidance as county government on related to travel for our employees, and Margaret will turn it over to you.
Yes, thanks very much. I'm seeking this morning some guidance from the Board of Commissioners about guidance related for our employees pertaining to personal travel. We have received many questions from employees, especially over the last week, because they are hearing the state and others discourage travel outside of the state to high-prevalence areas of COVID-19. I have a proposal this morning for your consideration, and I base this on review of the Department of Health guidelines around personal travel, as well as looking at the policies of related close entities like Mount Nittany, Health System, and Penn State. And these are the items that I think could possibly be in a guidance document to our employees. So, we would discourage personal travel out of state to high-prevalence areas, and include in a statement the most up-to-date guidance from the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Department of Health Advisory requires a 14-day home quarantine for all individuals who travel to certain states. That state list is changing. Delaware was on earlier this week. Now it's back off. I believe there are 18 states currently on the list, but that is, that is changing as the numbers are changing. We would ask any employee traveling to or from one of these areas to notify their supervisor of their plans prior to travel. We're not saying to anyone that they cannot travel. We don't really have that ability to do, to make that kind of a request, but we would ask that any employee traveling to or from one of these areas would be required to notify a supervisor of their plan to travel, prior to travel, and that any employee returning from one of these areas would be required to quarantine upon return for 14 days. This is consistent with all the policies I've reviewed. If an employee does elect to travel to a high-risk area as defined by our Pennsylvania Department of Health or the CDC, quarantine days would be considered time off without pay. However, an employee could elect to use accrued leave time, but we would not be paying for them to take a week vacation and then come back and have to quarantine separately with pay. They would either have to be in a situation where they, if they are working remotely and could continue to work, that would be one thing, but if they do not have work, they would be required to either take the time off without pay or to use accrued leave time. That would be the sum total of the guidance that we would provide. So, I'm interested in your feedback on that and whether or not you can increase this. Again, we've been getting many questions from employees. I know Kristen's been getting them in the HR office. I've received some. Chris has received some. So, it is on the minds of our employees currently.
Before we jump into discussion and feedback, I just want to echo the reasoning behind this, which is I've had several employees reach out to me as well, asking, "I'd like to go on vacation. My family's planned this. We will follow all of the social distancing and guidelines, but I would like to go on vacation, but I'd like to know how I, what are the expectations from the county as I go forward from this?" And as of today, we don't have any, and so it would be important for us to implement them. I think it's a good step in the, it's a good step to do. So, that's sort of what the impetus behind this discussion is. Okay. If there isn't any feedback, Margaret, what would be, would this be something that we would circulate among selected officials, department heads, and then come for final back? Do you want to get some feedback from them? What's your, what's your thinking on how you?
I think-
What would be your thinking?
I think the department heads are looking for guidance from the Board of Commissioners about how to move forward. I don't have a read on all of our elected officials in terms of, I haven't done a draft out to anyone along these lines yet, so I don't know. I can't really speak to that. I think that the board needs to develop its guidance, and as we've done with the other protocols, just put this out there.
Can we get a copy of that document?
Sure, I'll send it to you right now.
And, so you're mentioning this is based on what Penn State has in place and what other organization?
I looked at Mount Nittany's policy.
Okay. And-
And the Department of Health.
All right. And how, how does the policy handle, let's say, somebody's planning to go to Iowa in a couple of days. It's not on the list, but while they're there, Iowa turns into a state that has a bad outbreak, and the governor adds it to the list?
It doesn't address that in this particular doc, I mean, these are just some guidelines I put together for discussion today. We could expand to those, all those different scenarios, just like we've been doing with people being exposed. We are evaluating each situation and applying reasonableness to the approach. So, we could certainly address it in this document.
All right.
There's so many different scenarios we could come up with.
Right. Obviously, at some point at the bottom, it's going to need to say, you know, the Center County Administrator or her designee will, you know, handle cases not covered.
Right, because the minute we try to be all-inclusive, something will pop up that, you know, might be just a little bit different, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think my perspective on that, Commissioner, is where the thrust of this is really to educate employees on where they're, to be cognizant of what the state, where the hotspots are throughout the country and the state, and to be aware of that when they do, when they're going for their travel. And we have faith and confidence that they are going to be doing the social distancing, the mask-wearing, et cetera, in these areas, but we do want to make, we do want them to factor that into their decision-making when they, when they go for a vacation, because hopefully this doesn't happen, but if they would return with COVID-19 after they got exposed, and then they bring it into the workplace, that's going to have an issue. So, it's more about educating them and having them have this information that they can utilize and taking the necessary precautions when they, when they return, which is, which is very important. I'll say personally, you know, it's, it's, I'll leave it at that. I'll leave it at that. So, I think, so thank you, Margaret, for putting these together. I think they are helpful guidelines. They will be good for employees to review and follow. And in addition, we welcome the feedback if there are questions from employees regarding these guidelines.
I would add this to our protocols that we've provided previously to our department heads and elected officials. We've grouped those protocols into different categories, county buildings, guidance for employees, and protocols for follow. It would be added on to that. It would not be a standalone policy. It would, it would be a part of that protocol list. I just felt that this was something that you needed to discuss and provide approval for because it is significant. We would be saying to people, if you decide to do this and you can't come back for 14 days, and if, that may mean for people that they've got to use accrued leave or be unpaid, and that's very different than any of our other protocols.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. In terms of the motion here, or we don't have an action specifically, I'm pulling up policies that out. In the past, when we have done, trying to think, another policy we did recently with this, like mask-wearing, for example, is this something that we can just give, we can give you the okay to send out? Do we need it as a motion?
The mask policy was a standalone, specific policy related to universal masking. This would be a guidance that we would be giving. I think, I think I do need your approval because it does involve salary and payment to employees, so I do think you need to vote on the guidance.
Okay.
So, this, this is, it's not a policy, then? It's a guidance?
It's guidance, unless you, unless you would like to put it into policy format. We only have one policy related to COVID-19, and that's the masking requirement policy. So, basically, what this is, is guidance, you know, a lot, and it would be a protocol, like you need to work from home. You need to, you know, be following all of the DOH guidance, the protocols we've put into place for managing through this.
All right, because when I'm-
Could be a policy.
All right, because when I'm looking at the document, it doesn't really say in here that if you do travel to an area that is high prevalence, that's on the list from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, upon your return, you need to quarantine for 14 days, but if you're an individual who can perform their job remotely, we're going to continue to pay you, but if you're somebody who, you know, for example, a guard at the Correctional Facility where you have to show up in person, you're going to need to use accrued leave time to get paid.
Yes, I need to add that about if you are able to work at home, you could continue to work at home. The, yes.
I know from reviewing the Penn State University policy on travel, they, they don't necessarily have a specific requirement to use time upon, upon returning. Does, does Mount Nittany have that?
Yes.
Is that a-
Mount Nittany does.
Okay. And is that for all of their different departments, or is that just for their individuals that are coming in contact with patients?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I thought it was for everyone, but I can double-check on that.
Okay. And I, I celebrate the purpose behind this, the reason, the thinking behind this. I'm just thinking, if there is an employee who does not have the time, and they wish to go on vacation, essentially, they would be, they would be unable, or they would not, maybe sacrificing pay to go on vacation.
That is, that's correct. I mean, it's, it's not ideal in many ways, but the alternative is somebody goes to a spot designated as a high-risk area, doesn't have, has to come back to work, and then has been in an office with other people for an extended period of time. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the flip side of this. We can't, I mean, Kristen, maybe you could speak to this, or, I'm not sure, you could decide that you would pay people. People could go on vacation, and then you would pay them to be on quarantine when they come, come back if they don't have, but you wouldn't be able to say to some people, "You used your accrued time, but, well, if you don't have accrued time, we'll pay you to stay at home."
I know that I've spoken to some employees who have stated that if they have to be quarantined and won't be paid, they'll change their vacation plans, perhaps go somewhere else. I have a friend personally, who he was supposed to be traveling somewhere and instead is staying within Pennsylvania for his vacation. So, I mean, it's something that people will consider knowing what's expected when they return, I think.
Okay, that's helpful.
I mean, I suppose the far other end of this is to not address it and to, you know, people-
No.
Encourage people to travel, but I think that we have a need to provide some protection for the people in, you know, the returning offices.
And then in terms from the legal standpoint, is there, has Betsy been able to review this, or, or Steve Corwell? Is there any feedback from them on this?
I have not discussed this with Betsy, no, and I can do that today.
Okay. It may be helpful, and I'm thinking down the road. I'm just, you know, and I know this is, the way that we're saying is personal travel, but if there was ever an instance where an individual, you know, needed to visit family because there was a sick relative or a, I'm just trying to think of other ways. Yeah, I mean, I know most memorial services are being canceled or doing, done virtually, or they're limiting the amount of people who are in the room, but I'm just thinking of other instances where this may come into effect, but I still agree with, I still agree that we put the information out. And, I mean, I'd be supportive today of that, of basically the, putting out the first paragraph there, Margaret, that you have, that travel to high-prevalence areas is strongly discouraged. The most up-to-date guidance from the DOH is provided here, and then they require a 14-day home quarantine for all individuals who travel to certain states. And I think, I think that today, you could, I'd be in favor of you sending out, and then we doing, then us doing a little bit more work on the requirement for, you know, I mean, each of those sentences, or each of those paragraphs you have in the policy, but not policy, but that, that would be my suggestion, you sending out that first portion and then going from, going from there. I don't know if Mark or Steve have a thought on that.
I'm not sure we need a policy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, in the short term, that's a good compromise, is to just get the one paragraph guidance out there to remind people, if for some reason you have to travel to a high-prevalence state, reminding them that you need quarantine for 14 days when you get back, and that, you know, you might want to think about what that, what that looks like depending on the job you have with the county. And then we can spend more time talking to lawyers of background in personnel, seeing what other organizations have out there, and thinking through at least some of the options. You know, if you're just going to Texas, just see a few relatives, you know, that might not be a good idea. If you're going to Texas because your mother broke her hip, and you're the only person in the family at this moment who has the ability to help her for a couple of weeks till you figure out what's going on, we might look at that a little bit differently.
And the bottom line here is, you know, you can contract the virus right here in Center County if you're not being safe, if you're not masking, if you're not, you know, doing all of those other things. So, I mean, I, this was intended today to be a starting point for discussion. I can follow up and come back to you next week, Thursday, and talk about this a little bit further, but that gives us at least something that we can use consistently to reply to employees, because we also want to make sure that we're being consistent in our response to employees, since many of us have been asked by different people.
There are state guidelines in place, and even though state guidelines aren't mandates, so I would suggest that, that we look at this with a fresh set of eyes and not be so dictatorial about it.
Policy. I'm just trying to get comfort patiently, will me. So, in the interim between this, this, today and next week, having that personal travel out of state to high-prevalence areas is strongly discouraged. Most up-to-date guidance from the DOH is available at the website, and the DOH Advisory requires a 14-day home quarantine for all individuals who travel to certain states. I think that would be a helpful thing to send out as soon as we can, and then do some, like, we, some of the questions we had asked about, if a state would turn, if, if, let's say, somebody's on a week vacation, second day there, the state's added to the list, what do we do in that circumstance? I think that would be helpful. And like we said, if there's extraordinary circumstances with a medical issue or, you know, care, or, you know, visit, a non, I guess, a non-vacation leave, what would then it look like? So, if, Margaret, I think that works. If you're, if you're able to do that, that would be, we would appreciate that.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any other conversation on this? Okay. All right. Thank you, Margaret, very much, and we will go to the next item here. The CRBG process. Okay.
Okay, thank you. As you were aware, a county relief block grant implementation team was formed. The committee has met twice. The team has met twice. We are awaiting next week the addition of our block grant coordinator, and in the interim, we've moved forward to try to put some draft proposals together for you to begin reviewing, in two major areas. One is a proposal for your consideration around what the county might be requesting under the county relief block grant, and the second area is PPE. Last week, with Jeff, our emergency management coordinator, you asked him to come back by the, today's meeting for an order to be placed tomorrow. He's on the line here and can speak to that, but I'm going to have Chris to go over what she's put together so far. Again, I just want to emphasize, this is a first cut at it. It is a work in progress. It is shared today to get some sense from you about, from the Board of Commissioners, about whether we're thinking about this along the lines that- that will be helpful to you as you make decisions about the allocation of the county relief block grant funding. Natalie has Krista's document, I'm going to turn it over to her, she can walk through it quickly, and Natalie can share, do a screen share so that you can see what she's talking about. Okay, so Krista, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. So thank you for your time this morning. What you see before you is a spreadsheet that is, again, like Margaret had said, it's the first cut, this is a definite work in progress, but just something that we wanted to share early on to get your feedback on. So in a simple snapshot, if you look at the two columns to the right, you can see, and thanks to Tom Martin, who has done a great job of showing us in the yellow column what has been spent to date through COVID and the cumulative expenses. So you see, we're looking at a total of just 666,000 and some change, almost $667,000. Then in the peach column, to the very right, is where we have just sat and brainstormed and come up with ideas about how we could enhance our safety at Center County Government with more sanitization items, PP, some Plexiglas, some handheld wand for our vehicles and our conference rooms that can disinfect. And as you go down the left-hand column, you can see how we've grouped some different areas of where we thought we could utilize funds to help us. So I'd be happy to go down every line, or if you wanted to ask questions, if something is flagged in your mind and you'd like to ask questions about what our thoughts are, I'm going to be happy to share that as well. Any official feedback, any initial feedback right now?
Sure, so let's maybe not go through each of the lines, Krista, but if you can maybe talk more broadly about each of the categories, that might be helpful.
Okay, certainly. So under facilities management, we, if you notice, we have spent on supplies, we do plan on spending more on those sanitizing supplies. The PPE, if you see that 41,000, that is what was spent, especially our cloth masks that we provided to all our employees. But moving forward, we didn't put anything in that column because we are segueing over to Jeff Warren and EMA for that particular category. So that's why I didn't have anything there. Wands and sanitizing stations are newer items. We do not have those, but we think they would be, prove to be quite helpful, meaning the sanitizing stations are the stand-up ones that we thought we would put near elevators. Plexiglas, we are seeing a few of those installed right now, which I think our employees appreciate, and we would look to have more Plexiglas. More signs, larger visible items that our employees and visitors could see to practice social distancing. The administration, we did want to highlight that we did include the authorized leave pay that has been paid out to date. And we think that it is something that is reimbursable as far as moving forward. But again, wanted to get your feedback on that. And then lastly, the teleworking, there's a lot of things that had to have been purchased in a quick manner to get Citrix licenses for folks and laptops and able to telework from home, but then we also feel as though we could enhance those environments with better equipment, headsets, keyboards, monitors, those kinds of things, in addition to a large purchase of Office 365 that could help us video conference quite a bit better and share documents. Looking at a total of 1.3 million for up-to-date expenses and then future. Again, really looking for your feedback on what you think is a comfort level of our ask to the grant. Anybody?
Oh, yeah, we're, yeah. So in terms of the largest line item by far, it's the, if you take, if we would basically take out the COVID authorized leaves, we're talking about, that would leave about, that's about $800,000, and then the other expenditures are about $500,000.
That's correct.
Right, and then, I'm just trying to, and then can we scroll up again, Natalie, sorry? Uh, okay. And then okay. For the, okay, my only feedback would be for the finance and IT expenditures. Did we have any of those budgeted in the amended budget in 2020?
We did not, but Tom can speak to that. No, so for example, the finance plus is a brand-new, that piece of it is a brand-new addition. Same with 365, our budget included a renewal of our Microsoft license, but it did not include migration to the Office 365 environment. So we were very careful about that because we are, we are clear about the fact that we cannot ask or be reimbursed, it would not be allowable if we are asking to be reimbursed for something already budgeted. We know that what we have, that what we're asking for is beyond what was in our 2020 budget. Tom, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Do you want to add?
No, you're exactly right. I mean, you hit it right on the head because we did have a situation of something that, in the IT world, that we talked about in our group meeting, that was, like you said, was already budgeted. Even though it would fit under the spirit of what we're looking at, we couldn't include that in. So you're exactly right.
I think the overall goal that we've, the board has said is, we want to, everything, anything and everything that we can, we can apply to the CARES Act fund that county government spent, we should, anything at all. And then start to think about what do we, what additional needs do we have? So the only thing that I would think is, is there anything within the need-to-buy that we, have we covered everything? Is there anything that we could be additionally that we could be looking at or purchasing?
This represents what our implementation team is aware of. Krista's reached out to several of the departments. We need to probably spend a little bit more time making sure that we've not missed anything or that there aren't some good ideas out there that we don't know about that could potentially be added here. This is what we know today. We need, you know, probably a little bit more time, but didn't want to hold this up from sharing with you so that, to make sure that you think that we're on the right track here in terms of how it's being structured, the different categories, items, and so forth.
This is Steve. Has there been any conversation in your group about buying any of the, I guess, the standalone thermometer systems, temperature monitoring devices?
Yes, this, go ahead, Krista.
Yes, this does include, there's a line item for three temperature-taking machines in case we, in the event that we wanted to move forward with that. I priced them out at around $3,000 apiece, and I put three of them on there for our buildings, the courthouse, the courthouse annex, and our Willabang.
I would, I would up that to 10.
10 machines?
Yes, I would have them at the prison, I would have them at the entrances, and I would have them available for other entities within the community that may need them. And why I'm suggesting we get them ordered now is because I think there's probably going to be a run on them, and when we go back to buy them later, they probably won't be available, if they're even available now.
Good, we can do that. Being cognizant of the prison expenses, because Erie has a grant through PCCD, we are keeping, trying to keep those, but we need to keep those expenses separate, so. But thank you for the suggestion.
So we would have two buckets for the purchase of the temperature-taking machines. One bucket would be those that would be used by the county, so they would be included here. And then the other bucket would be for external entities, which could come under a different category, but yes, we could make a larger order.
I'm just suggesting we get them ordered now instead of waiting any longer.
Yeah, and that's, I agree, Commissioner, and I think in addition, the, it is important for us to draw from both buckets so that we can make sure that we're maximizing each of those. But yeah, your point remains, wherever it comes from, I would support ordering 10, and we can make those available as well.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good to me, too. It's a good first draft, a lot of thought went into this. I do share Commissioner Pike's concern about the $800,000 under administration, because there are some pretty firm guidelines that if you had these expenses in your budget as of early March, you're not allowed to get reimbursement. So I am a little concerned about if we would be authorized to bill for the COVID authorized leave pay because we were already going to pay these staff anyway in our budget.
We will get clarification in writing from our legal consultant about that line item. I know Jason had provided us some clarification on that after the group talked about it, but that's one item that we need to have legal review of. In fact, I think we should be setting up a process with our legal team through ZA to be looking at all of this so that we make sure that they don't see something that we've missed. But that would be certainly one item to flag.
Well, I think even before we look or reach out to them, it would, we could go with, through DCED, and there was an email sent, I'm sure everybody saw it, but just for the public in the record, there was an email that was sent out by CCAP that DCED has set up an email address specifically for questions related to the block grant, the county relief block grant, and is going to be doing webinars in the next few weeks to have counties jump on a video call and ask questions specifically. And so I think DCED could probably provide guidance on that. There is, I will say, the one thing that I think we are not missing, but we could include, would be the way that I, the guidance is stated is, if, and this is a Treasury guidance, is if an individual's time is substantially been dedicated to COVID-19, and there's some wiggle room with that. And Commissioner Dershowitz and I were at a town hall meeting with Senator Toomey and Representative Keller yesterday, and they said that they had written that broadly to allow. So not, so it seemed like 911 would be, would be one, EMA, Margaret, the administrator, Krista. So if we can get a better handle on what that substantially means, I mean, if it's, if they can look at it from day by day, if we can look at it day by day, which I think we have, or we could, if we can, you know, if Monday somebody didn't work on COVID, but on Tuesday they did, and we can pay for it in that level, I think let's look at it. But if they're going to write that broadly that we can utilize. So what I'm saying is, you do capture the, you do capture the authorized leave, but if we could think more broadly about whom else could be considered that from a COVID-19-related standpoint, that would be helpful.
That's an important add-on.
Right.
I think another way to look at it is whether or not their efforts have been redirected toward COVID-related activities.
Right, and, you know, from a, yeah, and I think it's response, so it has to be, it just can't be, you know, I'm now working from home, so that's COVID-related. It has to be, they're dedicated to, like, for example, Krista, she's putting this spreadsheet together, that's COVID-19-related planning and response. Margaret's writing, you know, these policies, COVID-19-related response, you know, so those, it has to meet that, yeah.
Cat is ordering Citrix licenses and servers and all kinds of equipment because that's COVID-19 response.
Exactly, exactly. Yep. And then, is it, Natalie, I think, if you just zoom out a little bit, I think we probably could see the full spreadsheet, I just wanted to look at it once more.
We can send this to you electronically as well, it's just in draft format now. So it's not finalized, but we certainly can send that to you right away, and we could take feedback over the next several days. This is, as we said from the top of the discussion, just a starting point.
No, it's very helpful, very helpful. No, good work. I think this is capturing a lot of it, it really shows the breadth of how we've pivoted when it comes to, when it comes to this, so yeah, it's, it looks good. Yeah, any, any other feedback on this, thoughts, suggestions? Okay, super, okay. Anything else in terms of the county relief block grant at this point, Margaret?
Yes, we have Jeff on the line to give you a report on PPE. I believe Jeff's on.
I'm here. Margaret, is there any way you could share that document? I downloaded, this is only my second Blue Jeans call, I downloaded the app a few minutes ago, but it doesn't, it seems to launch.
I'm going to send it, I will send it to Natalie right now, and she can put it on, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Just give me one minute. It's the one you sent to me last, yesterday, right, late yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, hold on.
So Commissioners, this document, it's kind of a, I took one that we sent you several weeks ago in reference to this, and then modified it some more, and I also put a spreadsheet on there that's much easier for you to look at. So I've had several conversations with you about this, and you've all had various areas of focus, and we talked about some things, talked to Commissioner Pike for a few minutes ago the other afternoon, or for a few minutes. Anyhow, so some of the things we did to save some money, the original one was 1.429 million, more or less, and that was just a in a perfect world, asking for as much as we could get, per se. So what I did, I whittled that down a lot. I also looked into some other things. For instance, you talked about the school systems. So I found out how many school students and staff members we have in our county, doesn't include the bleed over from Tyrone and Central Mountain School District, and then the stats for Philsburg-Oceola, for instance, some of those students are obviously from Clearfield County. Looked at what we have in stock and what we've utilized, what we've handed out already. The most expensive item on there, or one of them, was the N95 mask. So we were originally asking for 125,000 more, whittled that down to 50,000. And the cloth mask kept that at 150,000. We've got some pretty good prices on what we believe would be a quality product. We're looking at this, I have a spreadsheet I'll send you when we're done with the meeting here. We've looked out at a lot of vendors, a lot of things that are out there, and we're going to run into some issues as far as supply availability because every county in the nation right now is doing the same thing we're doing. Getting some feedback from the vendors about that. We have some, we're looking at quality, not just quantity in some of these things. But we've removed some items from this list, and the list is on there. If you scroll over to the third page, it'll have that spreadsheet that I'm referring to. Natalie, if you could please do that. There you go. So looking at this spreadsheet, like I said, we originally had 125,000 N95s in the first column, and shaving it down to 50, that reduced $400,000 off of that. The face shields, we just got 11,500 of them in, we have about 11,000 left, so we were able to reduce the amount of those. The isolation gowns, we reduced, the surgical mask on there. They kind of do the same They kinda do the same thing, but don't last as long as the cloth mask. And, and uh, people are wearing them for, you know, days on end. But it does seem to be the item that's most requested, one that we've uh, got the least inventory. And um, through our supply chains uh, from Pima, I've gotten the least amount of those because they're in such demand. Uh, the gloves, that's obvious, the hand sanitizer, um, we have several thousand bottles on hand we just received. I think uh, with everything the Commissioners have talked about supplying to various entities, that getting those, that many more in, another 10,000 would be prudent. Um, the thermometer's there, I increased it uh, by another hundred after Commissioner Higgins' recommendation. Once again, there's the cloth mask. Uh, I'm looking for input from the Commissioners and your opinions. On if you think that these quantities would be enough, and, and I thought obviously gonna be enough to keep us in supply for a while. Um, please consider that. We also want to keep a bit of a stockpile to replace the task force stockpile that we've expended. Um, when this is all said and done, for any future pandemics. Um, we reduced uh, other items on here, one of the next items is protective goggles. We're gonna have a lot of requests for those, you know, they're cheap enough, um, so keep that to 100. Uh, the U V sterilization units. I've done um, some research, looked at things, and we've talked about this in our COVID-19 meeting group. And, and I think there's something there, um, great that we can clean items and just set a lamp in a room or in a vehicle and let, let it run for 10 or 15 minutes. It'll sterilize and kill all the virus germs. But you're also not spraying things down with chemicals. I know that's been a concern um, with, with Lee and, and the other people using the atomizer spraying chemicals on electronic equipment. You're not taking any risk with this. Um, if you wanna increase that or, or don't feel it's necessary, uh, please let us know. But um, and the price I put on there, those are for the larger units that'll do a whole room. Um, we can maybe get some, they make hand wands, for instance, uh, and some smaller items. But uh, they would be a, a, a good asset for sterilizing ambulances, for instance. Their transportation vans, you know, at the end of the day, put one in the van, let it run for a few minutes and you don't have to worry about it. Everything is sterilized. Um, so please let me know your thoughts on that. So after we whittled this all away, as you can see, it's still a, a very significant amount, uh, you know, it's $791,000 more or less. Looking, you know, you're, you're the, you're make the decision maker and the check signer here. Um, based on the information that you provided with us, um, that's what we came up with, uh, for some numbers. Keep things going under the rest of COVID-19 and potentially a stockpile into the future. So that being said, um, please provide your input.
Thank you, Jeff.
I have, I have two thoughts.
Oh, Steve, if you, before you jumped in, I just wanted to make some comments just quickly. I, thank you. Uh, so Jeff, it's a balance between hitting the button, order button ASAP and us understanding a little bit uh, how long this is gonna last or, or what our need, what our needs are and how long this is gonna last. I just wanna say first and foremost, I don't think any of us know how long this is gonna go on. And I don't think, so I can give you, I could, we could all say, sounds good, looks good, but we have no idea how long this is gonna last. So one of the things that I've, uh, you know, and again, our, our direction was get this ordered by the end of this week. And I think, I think we can still do that, but a lot of work needs to go into the burn rate. What do we think the burn rate's gonna be for this? And uh, we should develop some estimates on burn rate through the end of this year, burn rate through um, the uh, a, a year from now. And as we go throughout this, uh, we can uh, monitor it. And my suggestion would be that we prepare to put another order in, maybe in October or November. Um, so that we can get replenished these supplies. Um, so also, if there's not a price point break, uh, we, we would also be cognizant of that. Where if you're not getting a, you know, if, if, if we're gonna put an order in for 50,000 N-95s, but if you put in 75,000 and it's a discount per item, we may wanna look at that. So um, uh, I don't, I, I don't think we should go too far into what the cost per item is today. Uh, but if there are, if there are, you know, if you can give us a little, hopefully you're getting the best price from these distributors. Um, I hope that's the case. Uh, but um, yeah. So my point being is I can offer you feedback and we all can, but I don't think any of us wants to know. But if, once we develop that burn rate and understand how often, how much we're using this, uh, that would be helpful. So um, but I know Commissioner Gersham wanted to make some comments, so I'll turn it over to him.
Well, I guess my first comment is I think we ought to get the order in ASAP because we're, we're chasing a time, timeline against a lot of other uh, counties and organizations that are trying to uh, uh, put, put orders in. Uh, I think we have a little bit of time to, to uh, redo or readjust and maybe even work with other counties or other organizations to uh, to make the big uh, the purchases. But I think, you know, let's use our best estimate and let's get something in as soon as possible. That would be my suggestion.
This is Mark. I uh, I think we're in the, the ballpark here. Um, to Commissioner Pipe's point, if we're ordering 200,000 surgical masks, but there's a nice price break at 250,000, may wanna look at that. Um, also, hopefully, uh, we have some grant money left over um, in November. We could take a look, do it, should, do we need to order more P P E? Is it still available? Are the prices still within reason uh, to replenish what we have burned up and, and what we might need in the future? Um, so I, I think, you know, we should hopefully maybe pull the trigger tomorrow, or if not, maybe on Monday. Um, but it would be nice to have a little bit of background or logic behind this, like Commissioner Pipe said, the burn rate. Uh, we can talk about how we're now buying more than one surgical mask for every center county resident. We're buying almost a cloth mask uh, for every center county resident. We're buying a pair of gloves for practically every center county resident. So it'd be nice to have a little bit of um, logic that the Commissioners could present in a couple of weeks at a future Commissioners meeting when we say, we spent just over three quarters of a million dollars on P P E. Some of it's gonna arrive as soon as the next week or two. Um, and here's a short paragraph-long um, description about why we spent three quarters of a million dollars on P P E.
Right. Uh, you, you talk about burn rate, some, some of the influences here. So if we have to provide a lot to school districts, or if you're gonna give some to Penn State, for instance, that's gonna go all at once. It's not gonna be a, you know, average burn rate per month per se. Um, the price break uh, part, I appreciate that because um, some of the quotes that we have already, for instance, for the N-95 was for 125,000. May become a little bit more expensive uh, with the reduced amount. Um, the other things in there, just to let you know, um, we have everything ready to pull the trigger. We've been in touch with a lot of these, the spreadsheet I'll send you in a while, we'll break these categories down. Give you some of the uh, prices that we received from various vendors. It's, you're gonna see that some of the amounts were the amounts on the older spreadsheet. Um, haven't gone in and changed all them yet from that particular one. Um, but, but like I said, we have a lot of information. We've been reaching out there that the best that three people can. And, and uh, so, and like Commissioner Pipe said in the beginning there, you know, you guys have no way of knowing, neither do we. Um, nobody knows how long this will last. Nobody knows what the future holds uh, and specifically for this. And, and um, we'll do our best to get you a burn rate um, once school starts and say things open up a little bit more uh, as far as businesses and, and other entities, then we're gonna have a better idea. And, and if you make the announcement at a meeting, hey, we have all this stuff. I don't think we should say we have it for every single person in the county because it's a one-shot deal. And potentially not even that in some categories. Uh, I'm sure we'll cross that bridge when we get to it in the best way that we can. But um, yeah, it, there's a ton of unknowns here and that's frustrating, like everything else about COVID-19. So like I said, we've, we've kinda, we think this can certainly make us go for a while. I appreciate the fact that you're willing to uh, and realize that we might have to purchase some more down the, down the line here.
Jeff, a, a specific question with the face shields. Uh, I know we have at least one local supplier in the county, Actuated Medical. Um, and I think they have maybe as many as 5,000 in stock. Were you able to get pricing from them?
I believe some pricing came in. I know that uh, I, I think Abby reached out to them. I'm not sure if they got back or not. But, and I also saw the email from Commissioner Pipe that was placed in the shared folder for this, um, from them. I believe they're located over at the uh, Old Shearup plant, correct?
Um, no, well, I'm not sure who was occupying it, but they're basically just up in the uh, uh, business park at the top of the hill by Sheets. They're very nearby. But yeah, I know. You know, but I, I hopefully it doesn't violate any rules, but you know, if they bid 11 bucks and the lowest bid is 995, you know, if you could try to signal to them some way that, you know, if you guys came down by a little more than a buck, we could get you $50,000. Um, it'd be nice if we could to try to purchase from not just somebody in Pennsylvania, but somebody right in, within center county.
Absolutely. Wonderful point. Um, some, something I wanna mention when you brought up face shields. So there's been various articles in, in medical personnel, uh, and some of the school districts are torn whether between they're gonna try to make the students wear masks. Um, some of them are saying face shields are better because then they're not gonna touch their faces often. Um, and some are talking a combination. So that's the one unknown with face shields where, where face shields might be replacing masks in some regards. So um, you know, if we bought another 5,000, that would give us about 16,000. But, but if they wanted them for every student per se, then, then that's gonna change that picture on us between the mask and the face shield. So it's all, like everything else with this, it's ever-evolving. Um, but the, the, most of the quotes we have, we have tried keeping within Pennsylvania and making sure they're legitimate. Uh, vendors, we're not gonna get scammed, and we've been looking at the best price for a quality product.
Thanks.
So Jeff, just to go, so there was an email that you had sent out, uh, and this was earlier this week, talking about an, an initial idea. And it looks like some of those numbers have changed. Um, can you talk a little bit about, so I'm looking, for example, um, uh, uh, yeah, I'm just looking at that list there. It looks like some, like N-95, you were thinking you were maybe gonna do a, a higher purchase of N-95s. But that has changed. Uh, any, just any, got, any thoughts on that or?
Yes, sir. Well, when uh, we, we spoke last week, um, you emphasized that, that uh, you know, we wanted to get away from the N-95s toward the cloth mask. And, and you're right, it's not a requirement that everybody wear an N-95. Um, the ones in there would primarily be for medical personnel. That would be our priority with those. Um, also, you know, I kinda got the impression that, that um, maybe we were asking too much early on. So when N-95 being more or less $5 each, uh, when we were, reduce the price, that's, that's where the biggest savings came in. And, and um, you know, if we're not gonna be issuing them out to the general public and the school districts, things of that nature, that, that was my reasoning behind lowering that amount. And, and you know, as you emphasized, you know, we were gonna lean towards, more towards cloth mask. And like I said, I wanted to keep the surgical mask at a higher rate or uh, uh, inventory just because that's the number one thing everybody's been asking for, whether it's county employees, even a lot of our first responders. They're just more comfortable for them to wear and, and uh, you know, but the bad part is they're technically, you know, designed to be disposable and they're not gonna last as long, you know, I've probably worn one for as much as a week at a time before I replaced it, but.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
N-95s.
And one of the points that Commissioner Gersham had, it, it, it uh, may have been before you joined the call, but it was a discussion about these, basically these heat sensing units um, that can be set up and it's connected to a computer. And as people are entering a building, you can see if their temperature is elevated by just them standing in front of this machine. It doesn't look like you have any on here. Uh, would you be able to put on? Okay, yeah, let's, why don't we, why don't, would, would 50 be too many? Uh, you know, if we're thinking about making these available to other entities throughout the county, uh, is that? Would you have any idea, recommendation for how much? So basically, we're gonna be, we already have taken care of county government. We're buying county government already. So this would be more for non-center county government entity.
Well, the first thing that pops into my mind when you mention that is that's something we need to provide to the school districts. And then it's all, you know, obviously at that point, it would be pretty much one per building. So it would take a little bit of research and, and not too much, but we can figure out how many actual buildings are in each school district. And, and maybe that's a jumping point for that. Um.
If, if I could, Jeff, on that, if I, if I could on that point, I'd see, when I think, and, and we've gotten a lot of requests from helping school districts out. I think, and I'm just thinking through this, is from a logistical supply chain, if we would give them, I'd much rather give them 10 or 20, whatever it would be, temperature units, rather than giving them 50 face shields, just because of the, the size of the order in terms of the physics, how much physical space it's gonna take up and you getting it over to them. But dropping off 10 temperature units is not gonna be too much of an issue. Um, so from that standpoint, that, from my personal standpoint, if we can give them more, not smaller, but um, more compact physical things that might be more expensive, that's fine. But um, I, 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 cause from a logistical standpoint, you getting them masks is just gonna be, that's gonna be a lot of work. But um, you know, giving them like the temperature units may work, so. Um, and, and I think they would be thankful for that and appreciate that. And if, God forbid, the schools close, whatnot, we can repurpose them elsewhere to the business community. So um, that, that's my fault on that. I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. But I think that the, the general point is we do wanna do a sizable order of those, those temperature units at this point.
Okay, well, I see that the uh, price they had on the county expenditure spreadsheet was $3,000 per unit. Not sure who looked into that. Uh, we'll ask Krista to see if it was her, um, well, possibly Lee, and we'll see what manufacturer they're looking at. And then we'll look at some of the, the vendors that uh, we've already spoken with and, and what's on that um, website for the P A portal for things.
Yes, Jeff.
Oh, go ahead, Krista, please.
Just real quick, I had gotten that information from another county who ordered one, so I can definitely um, get more feedback on that to provide you.
And Mark and Steve, am I at a, at a, at a whack on that one? But I think that was the general consensus. We wanted to try to get some sizable order of temperature.
Yeah, order as many as you can. That's, I don't think you're gonna get that many, but order what you can and see what we receive.
Right, I, I definitely think we should, should order a number of them. Um, we might wanna take a quick census of, say, the school districts, how many main entrances they have to all their buildings. Uh, I know what with all the active shooter stuff, it's a lot fewer entrances than they used to have. And at least that would give us some number to ground on to say, hey, the major school districts in center county have whatever it is, 30, 40 different entrances between them, where something like this would be helpful. Then to Commissioner Pipe's point, if for some reason the schools end up having to close uh, to physical presence, then we can redeploy those to uh, other organizations and other entities.
And, and just as another point, they may not need as many we, as we think because they might be doing screenings on school buses uh, prior to students getting on. But for some of the upperclassmen who are driving or have their, or parents drop their kids off, they may still need to do temperature screens at the buildings. So it, again, you know, talking with them and having uh, outreach for, would be, would be helpful. But um, uh, anyway, so fifth, you know, it is a sizable amount, but 50 sounds like a good amount at this point. I'm just putting that number out there, uh, and we can go from there. But um, again, like you said, have conversations with Krista, do what's on the P A portal, and uh, we can go from there.
Right, I, I think maybe we should reach out to the school superintendents and, and make sure that's something they wanna entertain because uh, they're actually putting a lot of things on the parents. And we've seen some of the plans that've come through, um, where they're gonna task the parents with taking temperatures and ensuring their kids are complying with everything prior to getting on the school bus, for instance, before they even get to the schools. So uh, you know, So, uh, you know, this is all great and I concur with you. But we'll talk to a few of the superintendents and make sure that they actually want them also.
Sounds good, Jeff.
I would think even if they don't, the business community would be interested in having them.
Oh, sure. And you look at some of the larger venues whenever they're able to open, you know, right now we're still at the 250 person. Now, for instance, um, does anybody know, are they using a, utilizing something like this at the airport, for instance?
Great point. I don't know, Jeff. Brian, Brian Samson might know, uh, since his, his guys, his, uh, men and women are up there. Uh, security, they, they might be able to help you out with that. I, I don't know though.
Right, right. So, and that's, that just pops into my mind that that'd be a good place to potentially have one. So, uh, like I said, we'll talk to the school superintendents and, and do that today and try to get an idea from them on that. And I'll make sure I'm, you're informed of whatever they advise.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there anything on this list that you, you were going to put on that you thought, nah, that might be a little bit too much at this point because we're all, we're all ears at this point in terms of if there's a, you know, some piece of equipment that might be very helpful?
Uh, not at this point. There were some other concerns I had that, uh, I spoke to Margaret about some of these other requests. For instance, like the CPI request, the training center, they were putting in some things in there that's not really in their bailiwick as far as a wish list goes. And, uh, you know, that some of those items, maybe if we were going to expend money to get those, it'd probably fall under the EMA office and not there. Other than that, there's not a lot. There were some IT things that we're still waiting on in the EOC. I, I passed on to Chad. But the one thing I did add since our previous conversations, like I talked about was the UV sterilization units. All of these things, when the money gets set aside, we may not be able to get them from the vendor that we spoke to in the last few days. And, and they may be out, the prices may change. So all of this has, I'm sure you're well aware of, has to be a little bit fluid. And maybe if we earmark so much funds for this, we can buy so much of it now, like you stated. And then once again in October, November, purchase the rest of it and make sure that we do use all the grant money for what it's earmarked for. But, um, you know, I, I talked to Commissioner Pike about this and, and I believe I mentioned it to Margaret. And I was curious, so there's 3,141 counties in the United States and they're all doing what we're doing right now. So that's why I have some concerns about the, what the availability is going to be in the supply chain for this. But in the same token, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeff, please. I'm sorry, Jeff, I cut you off there.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so, you know, we're going to have to be fluid. We might have to adjust fire, as they say, when, when, um, if we try to make a purchase and we'll, you know, can't get enough from one vendor, we'll, we'll find it at another location hopefully. And we may have to wait. Hopefully we can get it in several weeks like we're all hoping for in mid-August before the schools open up and Penn State opens up. But, um, you know, we, we may have our challenges there and, and so we should all be prepared for that. And the other part of it is, you talked about purchasing for Penn State, for instance. So the prison system has big house manufacturing and we looked into that and they make a very cheap mask. You have to tie the strings on it, for instance, and, and quality, it looks like you could, you know, you can see through it in the photos online of it. I don't know how much it's going to filter or contain. So those are the things that we're also looking at that, that we're going to get something that's going to function as it should. We've got some samples in from some of these vendors. When we reached out, they overnight shipped them to us. And some are good items, some are absolute garbage that I wouldn't ask anybody to rely on to keep them from becoming sick with the virus. So we're, we're looking at all that and, um, you know, once you sit, once you give us the green light to pull the trigger, we'll, uh, we'll start getting some stuff ordered and we'll work with Tom and Jason and Margaret on that as far as the finance side of it.
Thank you, Jeff. In terms of procurement and how this needs to look, Jason, have you, uh, I know there were questions that's been discussed about how this is procured. Is there any feedback you'd have on that at this point? Any thoughts?
On, uh, on purchasing the PPE or I guess, yeah, well, I mean, we're about to make 800, we're almost going to spend about $800,000 on PPE. Is there, from an auditing standpoint, is there, doesn't that, does that, does that trigger anything? Do we need to, you know, yeah? Yeah, I think, um, from our perspective, or if we're purchasing it to distribute it, that is by far the easiest and cleanest route. So, um, you know, I, I, I think there was some talk, I'm sorry, I had to tune out for a couple of minutes here. But, um, I think there was some talk about the bidding process for some of this stuff. And over $10,000, you do need three bids. I don't believe you need to do an RFP process. So there would be some things there that we would need to consider. But outside of that, if we're purchasing it to distribute it, that's the easiest, cleanest route. And certainly one that I would be much more a fan of.
Thank you, Jason. And since we have the emergency declaration, the emergency declaration essentially allows us to not bid it out. We can just buy it because again, it's an emergency, it's for COVID-19. But it would still be best practice, you're saying, to at least get three bids for each of the, or three, three quotes for each of the items we're going to buy.
If needed. I mean, if the emergency declaration allows us around that, then I think we're okay. So that's, um, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not setting ourselves up for any tripping or anything like that along the process. So if the emergency declaration allows us around the, like needing three bids or whatever it might be, then that's, that's totally fine by me.
Well, it sounds like Jeff, you're doing, you're getting some other bids. So I think we're in good shape from that standpoint. But I just wanted to make sure that we were clear from your perspective, Jason. It's quite a large purchase. So, um, just wanted to make sure that was the case, but okay. And Jeff, uh, just to go back to your point, it was a good point about how there's probably thousands of other counties trying to get their hands on some of these things. We also don't want to get into a position where, you know, this money has to be spent by December 30th. And so I would think if we would want to set a point, I mean, we, if we can get monitoring on a monthly basis of how we're doing with each of these things. And, um, at some point, probably maybe late September, October, we'd put another order in. So we're not in the, you know, competing with all these counties to spend all that money at the end of the year. Uh, that might be a good point. Uh, so, um, or it might be a good point at which we reconsider this. But just a thought, just a, just something to keep in mind. But again, appreciate all the work that you've put into this and, uh, it'll, it'll be very meaningful. So thank you.
The problem is what we're here for and, uh, you know, we're just trying to plan the best we can for this. And, and obviously we will track everything very well. And, uh, I guess I think we're in a position that we could start purchasing right now.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions for Jeff? Okay. All right. Uh, so would we, uh, let's, let's make it official. Is there a motion to, we don't have to make it an exact dollar amount, but, uh, we just received about $800,000 in, in suggestions and recommendations from our EMA office for PPE. Is there a motion to approve that expenditure?
Motion to approve the expenditure of roughly $800,000 for purchase of PPE and related items to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. And for the record, this is coming from the CARES Act funds. So we do, and we have received that. We have that and, uh, we got the check from the state. So we have that. So this would again be a CARES Act expenditure. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? And just to check, Tom, Margaret, we're all good on, on this front? Any, any other questions you'd have for us on this or we're good?
Yeah, we're good. I, uh, I'm gonna, I already emailed Julie and told her what's going on here so we can get some POs set up and get everything rocking and rolling. So.
Margaret, we're all good? Oh, please, Jeff. Yep.
I'm sorry to interrupt there. Um, now, if you want to order 50 of those thermometers at $3,000 each, do you want to earmark money for that also?
Is there, Commissioner Higgins, are you willing to amend the motion to include the purchase of those thermometers? Or, uh, heat, heat, heat sensors, whatever they are?
Um, sure. I will amend my motion for a potential additional purchase of heat monitoring systems, uh, for buildings and events.
Second.
Okay. Uh, the motion, uh, let's vote on the amended motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So the motion has been amended. Uh, Margaret, anything before we take that final vote?
Not related to this action, but separate from that, related to PPE?
So is it okay if we vote on this and then we'll discuss?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the final amended, uh, motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously. Yes, Margaret.
I just wanted to mention that perhaps this is not our only order related to PPE as we engage more with our community partners and organizations. It may be that we find that there are other areas of importance and we might need to come back. So I kind of, I am viewing this as sort of a, a big step forward, phase one. There may be subsequent orders and I, I, we're not finished by a long shot, I don't think. I don't know if Jeff agrees or not, but I, I, I don't think this is, I think there's more research to be done on who needs what.
I would concur. We can each share our thoughts on this, but I, I would concur. We're, uh, we're going to monitor the situation. This is a, absolutely a phase one purchase. Absolutely. Yep.
That's a great point, Margaret. And, and as I stated, some of this is going to change. The example I provided with the face shield, uh, it might be replacing masks for students. So, um, maybe we should just make an initial purchase of not everything, of a percentage of this, and then have that money in reserve to be spent by the end of the year. But as things change, then we can adjust and purchase what people are asking for if it's not totally in line with what we predicted.
Well, I was really thinking that this, what I was referencing was in addition to what you've already been approved to purchase. I'm talking about, this is round one of purchasing. This isn't to put money in reserve. This is, there may be more, but it would be in addition to what was just approved.
Yes, if we, if, if, if in a week or two, when we start to really talk with the businesses and put applications out for funds, if they come back and say, we hear from businesses or entities, nonprofits, et cetera, saying we're getting quotes that are double what the county's getting when it comes to PPE. We'd like to see you buy them and then we can get them from you. That might be the route we take instead of putting a grant out or, or giving them grants. They might want us to purchase them. So yes, it's, the, the conversation of PPE is not off the radar. It's still very much in the center of the radar. And, uh, if we're seeing additional needs, let's, let's look at buying more PPE. And again, saving our community money. So.
There's one other element I'd like to chime in on, and that is, you know, what we think what we, what we're buying today may be useful for the conversation for 2020 and 2021 perhaps. But I think we need to restock or redevelop a, a supply for future events yet unseen.
Commissioner, I, I've given that a lot of thought and I, I reached out to some folks, uh, state, federal, and just to get their perspectives. From what I am hearing is that it's going to be a lot like what happened after 9/11, where they're going to allocate funds specifically for stockpiles. So the way that I had approached this and suggest we approach it is we, we buy what we need. We buy a little bit of additional, but we would worry about, but if, if things start to, let's say our, our quantity starts to diminish, we would just buy more so that we can keep getting the things out the door. And then after this is done, we can worry about getting a stockpile. And again, I don't think what you're saying is let's put every, let's put half of this in a room, seal it up, don't touch it until 10 years from now. And whatever we use, we just buy. My, my thinking is just use you, buy and use, buy and use. And then after we get done this, we, we can, you know, we can stockpile it. I just, I, I don't know if we have the room and the logistics to be able to, you know, store stuff. And I'd much rather get it out into the community rather than having it stocked, stored up. So.
I would do both. That's all I'm considering.
I, I think the, the future needs is, is more of an October conversation. We'll have more information at that point about what people are actually using. We'll get into a pandemic and the Commissioner Pike's point, maybe at that point we'll have some visibility on what the federal and state government might be looking at for long-term. Uh, but you know, I think we should purchase a bit more than we think we're going to need. Uh, so we're prepared. And if we have extra and it turns out that it's the right kind of stuff for a future pandemic, you know, then we seal it up and store it away for several years.
I like that. For all we know, we, the purchase today may have been needed for what we need for the rest of the year into 2021 and a stockpile. But we won't, we won't know that until we get a few more months into this thing. But, um, let's not, but I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Gersham. Let's not take the stockpile conversation off the, uh, off the agenda because the purchase that was made 10 years ago, we're using it today. Very, it's been very helpful. But let's, um, you know, let's not take that off the, the, our radar screens as well. Okay. All right. Um, anything else on PPE specifically? Okay. All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And consider, and continue with the rest of the agenda. So, uh, under our personnel items, we have the correctional facility. And we have a number of different items here for promotions, personnel requisitions, appointments for staff. Uh, is there any questions for any of those items on, on the correctional facility? If not, would there be a motion to, to approve those 10 items?
Motion to approve the 10 items for the correctional facility.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. For our facilities management, we have the two items that we approved on the salary board. Would there be a motion to approve the two personnel requisitions for custodial worker one in facilities management?
Motion to approve the, uh, personnel requisition for two custodial worker one.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. For human services, we have two items. We have consideration of the approval of the personnel requisition for a caseworker in CYS. We also have the consideration of the approval of the leave of absence extension for Catherine Arbogast in the drug and alcohol office. Would there be a motion to approve those two items?
Motion to approve the two items for human services.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Uh, we have one item for our public defenders office. Need to consider approval of the personnel requisition for first assistant public defender. And it wouldn't be at the correctional facility, it would just be at the public defender's office there. Uh, and we do want to thank, huge thanks, uh, for Deb Lux. Deb has been with the county since, uh, 1990. So she's, uh, served admirably the county for 30 years and we appreciate all of her work. That's a, going to be a big position to fill and we thank her again for her service to the county. Uh, would there be a motion to approve the personnel requisition?
Motion to approve the personnel requisition for the public defender department.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. We will turn this item over to you.
I'm sorry, Mike, you, are you turning the next one over to me? I lost you there?
Yes, we would be, yes.
All right, you faded out. Uh, so, uh, the, the next item is, uh, a letter of engagement with Babs Callan, Clemenson, Zomner, known to us as Babs Callan, to jointly represent the county, uh, and other counties identified on Exhibit A with respect to the litigation filed the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania titled Donald J. Trump for President versus Kathy Boekvar and docketed, and, and it goes on here. But this, uh, is a retainer agreement. We've reviewed it and discussed and, uh, looking for your approval today.
Thank you, Margaret, and, uh, we are joining with other counties in this litigation and that will, so this is not just Center County. Uh, other counties would approve, be approving this, the same agreement essentially.
That's correct. Ours is somewhat different because, um, we retain Babs Callan as our county solicitor, uh, as well. So we need to make sure that we have some additional protections in there. Uh, but in essence, yes, other counties are joining on and that's great because we can do this together and makes, uh, it's more efficient.
And a cost savings as well.
Cost savings, exactly, more efficient.
All right, uh, any questions, comments, feedback on this item? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the? Oh, yep, sorry, Steve.
No, I just, I agree. I think this is going to be a cost savings and we need to move forward, I think, in this case. And hopefully the state will carry most of the load, but, uh, we have to defend ourselves as well.
Okay, uh, would there be a motion to approve the letter of agreement?
Motion to approve the letter of engagement with Babs Callan at AL to jointly represent the county of Center and other counties, um, for the, uh, litigation, uh, from, um, the Donald J. Trump for President at AL versus Kathy Boekvar at AL.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Questions? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Moving into discussion items, uh, uh, we have, our first item is for, uh, community development block grant. And, uh, this is a proposal between the CETA Council of Governments and the county. And, uh, uh, we'll, uh, turn it over to Margaret if there's any, uh, uh, context to this, Margaret, before we turn it over to Ray.
Uh, no, uh, other than we did reach out to CETA COG about the possibility of working with us to provide support under our CDBG, uh, Community Development Block Grant program that we offer. Uh, Ray is prepared to talk about what the proposals include and Tom also has looked at this from a fiscal standpoint as well, so they're both on the line.
Yep, um, I've looked at, uh, there's three proposals. I know the agenda has one for the fiscal years of 16, 17, 18, and 19. There's an additional proposal for fiscal year 20, uh, for that grant and also the CDBGCV funds, uh, the CETA COG has provided a proposal. And within each of their proposals, they've included the grant administration, the activity and management of those grants, uh, including environmental reviews, public hearings, uh, working with drawing down funds to reimburse, uh, any, uh, costs that we have in, with those projects in this particular CDBG year. Uh, so on the face of it, the proposals look very good as far as what responsibility they're taking on. Um, I had a conversation with Don Holderman from Belphonse. They're an on behalf of entitlement municipality under our contracts. And Don just gave me an update on where they're at with a few of their grants, uh, grant projects, um, specifically Tallyran Pedestrian Bridge, uh, being one of the major ones. Uh, one of the concerns that Don shared with me was that, um, he was working with Matt on, uh, converting some administrative funds from fiscal year 17 and 18 to go towards the Tallyran Bridge project. Um, we made, uh, Terry, uh, Provost at CETA COG aware of this. We have a call with her tomorrow. So there may be some adjustment in the on behalf of municipality that we have under the fiscal years, um, 16, 17, 18, 19 because of that, um, switching funds to a construction project. Uh, other than that, uh, I know I have some total numbers on admin for the CDBG program, but the up-to-date numbers from IDIS I do not have because of the fact that I'm not authorized to go into IDIS. I know Wendy Davidson has tried and attempted to, uh, draw down reports for those fiscal years and has, has had technical difficulties and let DCD know that. Uh, the only other person that would have IDIS access would be Betsy Barnett, but, uh, Betsy has a permission request in right now for drawdown of funds. They have not approved her yet. So the only person right now that can draw down funds through IDIS is, um, Wendy Davidson, uh, which would give us a better picture on, uh, what admin funds are left in each fiscal year. Uh, and that's where we're at.
Tom, we'll turn it over to you. If you could give maybe a side-by-side comparison of where we're at, um, moving in, in this direction?
Yeah, Natalie, can you share the Excel file that I sent to you? So if you look at the Excel spreadsheet here, um, what I tried to do was break down the, um, break down the CDBG, uh, grants. Um, again, on the agenda today, we're looking at the 2016 through 2019, um, grants and so we had a proposal from CETA COG as far as what those costs would be for the administration, uh, activity development and management of that. And I broke those down to those categories. So the total cost would be $125,500. They also gave us, um, uh, amounts for the 2020 CDBG for $82,000 and then for the CDBG COVID response for $23,200. What I wanted to do, to do to give you some perspective was, um, obviously we had a, um, a, a position in planning that was, um, dedicated to working with this. And so I listed that, uh, that positions, um, budgeted salaries and benefits for, um, 2020. So you can see what that dollar amount was there, which was around $94,000. What has been expended so far on that position? And then, um, uh, payouts for that position for, um, uh, accruals and then the remaining funds that would be available. So if you look at that and you see there'd be about $28,000 in funds available for the remainder of, of the 2020 based on the budgeted amounts. And what I did down below was, when we typically done the budget for the CDBG program, the administrative, um, funds that we get are right around 10%. So if you look at the 2020 budget, we had budgeted $50,000 in, um, CDBG admin revenue. I looked back at prior years to see what our actual amounts were. We had $104,000 in 2019, $99,000 in 2018, and then $27,000 in 2017. So what makes this, um, like I said, a little bit interesting and challenging is the fact that, um, these grants gone for multiple years. So we're still drawing down, like, uh, Ray had talked about, administrative revenue from 2016 grants, 2017, 2018, and 2019. So to get that amount will be helpful to allow you to know how that works. What happens right now from a mechanical standpoint is that that position is obviously in planning and that expense for that position is, is located in, in planning. But what would happen would be, there would be a internal charge from the planning department over to the CDBG program to, uh, show that person's time towards that program. And in the prior years, it's been around, you know, maybe 50,000 or about half of what is, that person's budgeted salaries and, and, um, benefits were to, to that program. And then the planning department would recognize that revenue, so that will be a wash there. So obviously if we went with, uh, CETA COG here, we wouldn't have that internal charge. We would have that expense showing up in the CDBG, um, program. So again, um, that budgeted salaries and benefits is for one year per, uh, uh, for one-year timeframe. Um, it would depend on how many years it would take and how much admin dollars are there to be able to draw down to show you where you're going to end at, end up from a net standpoint.
So Tom, in terms of, uh, it, you know, is it, if it, yeah, so is comparing it to how we were doing it before, is there more of a cost to us? Do we need to supplant? Or do we need to use general fund dollars in addition to the allowable expenditures, allowable administrative expenditures through CDBG?
I won't really be able to tell you that until I see what Ray was talking about, which is what the admin dollars are left that's in the, in the plan. As far as looking at it right now, it looks like there may obviously be a cost to the county. If we look at these three grants here and what they're proposing for, uh, for the 20, for the COVID and then for the CDBG, that's $230,700. And then keep in mind that, that salary for that position, salaries and benefits, that, that position also did some other functions. So not all of the salaries and benefits went towards that portion. So again, it would just, you know, it depends on year to year on the activity that would be there. But if I got the total admin dollars, I would be able to add those admin dollars up, be able to get a, a cost there and then have the amounts that they, they have in place. Um, and then typically what we would move over as far as a charge from one department to the other. But again, looking at it off the cuff, I think there may be, uh, there might be some cost to the county to be able to, to do this.
Okay, any, any questions on this, thoughts on this?
I think we need to move ahead and I would support, uh, moving the, the, uh, the, uh, CBG, uh, program to, uh, CETA COG's care.
I, I agree with Steve. In the short run, we really don't have much of a choice. Once the dust settles a little bit, maybe we can look at possibly bringing it back in-house again. But right now, everybody's too busy. There's too much going on. Um, there's a lot of things that we just don't know. So I, I would agree with moving it to, to CETA COG.
Okay, uh, so just, uh, and again, the, the agreement, Ray, this is helpful as well is, is going to be for 16, 17, 18, and 19 and 20, so the one we're currently in. Basically, the one we're doing currently for this year and then everything prior. And then the CDB, and then the C, and the, then the COVID CD.
That's correct.
Okay, so if we would want to do something for 2021 differently, we would have that option. They're, they're not obligated, we're, we are not, if we approve all these agreements, we're not obligated to, uh, have CETA COG do this for next year's COVID night, I'm sorry, next year's CDBGE. Correct?
That's correct. I think we would be requesting another proposal for 2021 uh, in the manner they laid out with the grant administration, the development and the, uh, management of activities.
And, and likewise, if we would get another allocation of CDBGCV for the COVID, which I, I understand that we will be getting another, I want to say allocation of about $160,000, $160,000. They would, again, then send another proposal over to us regarding that.
That's correct. And, um, to add another layer, if there is a competitive CDBG, um, grant available, which I believe they were coordinating with us previously, I, I'm assuming we'd want an agreement with that too.
Are you talking about the one for Potter's Mills?
Uh, no, actually, I believe, uh, there was competitive dollars for COVID uh, on top of the other COVID tranches that are available.
You know what, you know, we're, I'm going to ask CETA COG to do, the very first thing I'm going to ask CETA COG to do is to do a nice one-pager that has all the projects going back to 2016 that we currently have open and all these different, uh, ones that we have open currently. I think that'd be, I, I hope that they're not going to charge us extra for that, but that'd be a terrific thing to see just because, uh, we don't want to get lost, lost. We don't want to get all these other projects lost in, uh, lost in the shuffle. And there's a, a lot to keep in mind, so.
Yes.
But that'd be, that'd be something, that'd be something terrific if you're willing to do that.
Yep, I agree.
It's, but, but Ray, it's Steve, if there, if there are competitive dollars available for projects, we should probably know about that and get, get in on that, uh, that band, you know, on that, uh, uh, conversation as well.
Steve, you're right, and I think the, the discussion with CETA COG prior was the direction we wanted to go. I, I believe Matt was going to approach the commissioners on a way in which we could take advantage of those competitive funds. And I don't think we got to that point yet because we were dealing with these other DV level or coronavirus levels of funding. So, yeah, it's worth, definitely worth a discussion on those competitive.
Thanks, Ray.
Okay, excellent. All right, any other further comments, questions on the, and again, there are three agreements that we have, uh, with CETA COG, with the county. Is there any other questions on those?
I would, I would add, uh, Mike, that I've asked for Betsy's review and I've not heard back from her. So if, um, you want to approve today pending her approval, um, that would be helpful.
Yeah, uh, uh, would you want to include that in, in a motion?
Yes.
Okay, the motion then.
All right, so what was the second part of the motion, Margaret?
Approval pending solicitor, uh, review and approval.
Oh, okay. All right, so motion to approve the proposal from CETA Council of Governments to provide a portion of the professional and administrative services for federal fiscal year 16, 17, 18, 19, and I believe also 20, for the Center County Community Development Block Grants, uh, pending solicitor review.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Uh, thank you, Ray, and we'll, we'll keep it with Ray, uh, in talking about, uh, unless, Margaret, did you have any introduction to this for the RACP discussion?
Other than, uh, RACP is open and so we need to talk about, uh, what's on the list already and what you might want to, uh, add or apply for.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Ray then, thank you.
Sure, um, looking at the RACP, there are legislative itemizations that have been approved in prior years. I think starting in 2010, and some of them have a sunset of, uh, 2020. Some others have a sunset of about 2023 where there's specific allocations for about 32 projects identified on the RACP website. Uh, some of those, uh, projects have begun, some of those projects are just starting. And others are general projects that were identified for economic development purposes, for natural gas service. And, uh, out of those 32, I don't have a total of number of, the total amount, uh, fiscally of those requests, but they range in, uh, two, $2 million requests all the way up to over $20 million requests. Uh, some of them are county-related, um, and others are municipal. Uh, just as an example, one of the items on the list is the Center Hall Potter Township, uh, Fire Hall, which is currently under a land development. Uh, I don't know if they're utilizing RACP funds, but they're moving forward with a project. Um, another project that I know of, uh, that's on the list, uh, is the Wildlife for Everyone, which I believe had an allocation of $3 million. Uh, however, I believe Wildlife for Everyone has chosen to go towards the DCNR grant program. So those are just a couple of examples out of the 32 that are listed. Um, like I said, there's some that are very general and some that are more specific. Uh, uh, don't know, uh, I guess the grant deadline is August 13th, um, coming up here quick. And, uh, I have coordinated with Holly Reddinger, Reedlinger from RACP and Holly indicated to me, I just wanted some clarification. Holly Reddinger, Reedlinger from RACP. And Holly indicated to me, I just wanted some clarification on the list of 32 projects. And she said that a project would have to come from this list. It's not an opportunity for us to add any projects because that's legislative again, but we would have to choose a project on the itemized list that exists already and move forward with the preliminary application if the commissioner so choose.
Thank you, Ray. Yeah, that's a great point, Ray. It, it currently needs to be on the list. So this was more just to make us all aware of that and to discuss, or so that we could start to look at that list and identify what we would like to, as a county government, request and apply for. And I don't know, Ray, if you have that link from the state website that you'd be willing to send around to everybody, so we could look at, so we could look at what's on there, that'd be, that'd be great.
Not a problem. I'll do that.
Thank you. By general, in terms of what the funding is available for and could go towards. But any initial thoughts, comments on this?
This is Steve. I think, I think it makes sense to look at it, even though those dollars are quote-unquote in the legislation, getting those dollars out is still going to be quite a, you know, tough political lift. So I think we need to choose wisely, is what I would suggest, and maybe just go for one good project and try to, try to move it forward.
That's not a bad idea. I think that makes a lot of sense. We want to take one shot at this and make it a, make it a meaningful one. And one of the things that I know that we're all going to be thinking about is the use of the old Center Crest building. And the one, the one suggestion that I would, would have for Ray and his team in planning would be to maybe churn through and peruse the past awards for RACP to see if there's anything that we can, if there's ever been an award for anything that's been for use of, of an old county building for repurposing and reutilizing that. And just, and then just, well, first and foremost, it would be to see if we can, if there's anything on the list that's currently been itemized, that we, if we could find anything that would fit underneath there. I know there's a lot of economic development rehabilitation. So I think there are, there are, there are a few line items there. I think in 2017 that we applied for that are very generic in terms of economic development that we could look for. So anyway, that was my first thinking with Center Crest utilizing that building in some sort of way. But again, we can take a look at the list and have this as an ongoing discussion on our Thursday meetings. I think that'd be my suggestion.
Michael, you're correct. There is one project on the itemization list, which you will see under 9180, and it's, it was put in in 2017. It was termed Acquisition Infrastructure Rehabilitation Construction Other Related Costs for Skilled Nursing Care Facility as a County Project. I don't know if that's close. That's a $10 million line item.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
That was for the new Center Crest.
Yes, yeah, Commissioner Dershowitz answered that. Yeah, that, that was for the, for Center Care. But they, they decided not to go through that route for the RACP. Oh, actually, no, no, Steve, actually, actually, I'm actually in the list that Ray sent out. There's an item 9180, and 90 specifically for Center Care. So this, this actually is for just generically a skilled nursing facility. So if we would want to sell the building once we're out of it, and, you know, attract a skilled nursing facility to come in, there is a RACP that's available to, for an entity that could rehab that building. But anyway, I think there's one there that was for general economic development somewhere on that list.
There are a few of those.
Yeah. Even the Belfont Borough, the Belfont Borough has a, they, well, they have a downtown for Belfont. But yeah, so let's, we'll keep it on the radar screen. And but yeah, if there's any, any way you could try to think about one for, you know, Center Crest and, and other ideas as well, Ray, do you have any thoughts as well?
Okay, will do.
Okay. All right. Any other feedback on that?
No, there are some grant requirements that I've been looking into. And basically, a RACP project has to be something that's solely funded through RACP and not other state program or state grants. There are some caveats to that, but this money has to primarily be for, you know, job retention. It's regional in nature. So looking at some of those, that we're keeping those in mind as well, looking at the itemizations.
It also has to have the support of the local legislators because they have to, they have to bring it forward to the governor's office for consideration.
Yep, that's a good point.
Okay. All right. Hearing no other comments. We'll revisit this next week. Ray, thank you very much.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Sure. Okay. Next on our discussion items, we have a discussion that we wanted to have related to the vacant deputy administrator position for the commissioner's office, and talking about the potential for revamping the, or re-looking at the job description, revamping it, and then putting it on next week's Thursday agenda for posting. And we wanted to get some feedback and discussion related to that. Margaret, if you wanted to add anything before, but I did have some comments related to this.
I have reviewed the job description. In large part, it would remain intact. I think that it captures the types of functions that we would be looking for in a deputy or assistant administrator position. It could really stand as it is if you wanted to move forward. I have made some tentative changes to it, which I can send out for everybody to look at. I think it's, it comes down to a question of timing and, you know, when, when is the right time to reconsider?
Okay, thank you, Margaret. I am in full support of putting this position out there. We wanted to, when we initially had the position become vacant in May, wanted to see how the pandemic would be over the next few months, and if it, if it potentially had decreased the workload, we would look at maybe continuing to have it vacant. But it has not. The workload has increased, especially with the continued nature of us being a remote workforce that actually makes it more difficult, I think, to coordinate things and work on things from our office's standpoint. Margaret has been doing a phenomenal, incredible job, leading us through this point, and working with our elected officials and department heads, all of our various partners with this. But the, the work is still, is still there, and it is still increasing. And so I'm very supportive of having this position be posted to assist Margaret and to be able to assist our office, and continue to have this be a very vital position for us in county government. And I do think we'll get qualified applicants. I do think we'll be able to fill the position fairly quickly. And again, make sure that we have the assistance that Margaret needs to be able to work on the many projects related. County government business has not stopped due to COVID-19. If anything, it's picked up. And it's going to be very important to have somebody that she can work with in that, in that close capacity. But I do think it's important that we revisit the job description. And at Margaret's comfort level, whatever she would like to put out there with the position, I would be comfortable with. If we wanted to change it to assistant administrator, that's fine. But I think you'd have to have a comfort, Margaret, of what that position is looking at and how it would help you best. But I strongly support it. So if it's in a version that we could put out there, pending our, our review or pending your review, if we could put it out there as early as Monday, that would be, I think, very terrific. But I'll let Commissioner Higgins and Dershowitz weigh in as well.
Mike, I think you covered a lot of the points very well. You know, at this point, our workload is not decreasing, it's increasing. And Margaret and Natalie Byrd have been doing a wonderful job under what's essentially, at this point, in my opinion, a crushing workload. There's